Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. Before we do the pledge, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Al Mueller, who passed away. He was the treasurer here at Cole County from 1997 till 2008. So... Okay. We will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. All right. Don't we miss you last week?
Well, thank you.
Minutes are on board for certain files?
I'm not having to.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
I don't have anything for us this week on the calendar.
It's quiet.
It's quiet.
Every month.
Shh. There'll be things that happen.
Tomorrow, I have a salute to America 24 meeting. And in the afternoon, Mid-Mall Regional Planning Commission in Ashland. On Thursday, the governor is gonna be at a groundbreaking at Chestnut on the new state lab that's being built by the prison. And for all you Dallas Cowboy fans, the Super Bowl trophy will be at the Capitol on Thursday.
I'm still in the 90s with ours.
Okay.
I remember Roger Staubach way back when.
Friday is Mayor's Cup and also a Pringer Advisory Board meeting. That's what I have.
All I have is Thursday. I will be speaking to the leadership Jefferson City down at the police training room. So I'm gonna impart all wisdom of county government and everything we do. So that's all I have. I'm like Jeff, it's quiet. Presentation from staff consultants invited guest Williams Keepers to present report of 2023 audited financial statements. We have books.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Amanda Schultz. I'm an audit partner at Williams Keepers here in Jeff City. And this is Ashley Brandell. She's one of our audit managers, but she was actually the in charge on the county's audits again this year. So we'll be presenting our summary report this morning, which hits the highlights of the individual reports that we issued as a result of our 2023 audit. We went into this in a little more detail with the commission in a closed session last week, so we'll just hit really the highlights of the highlights this morning. The first report that we issued as a result of our audit was the audited financial statements. That document contains the county's annual financial statements for the calendar year that ended December 31st, 2023, along with our report on those financial statements. In our report, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion, which means that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. That is the best opinion that the county can get, and it means that the users of your financial statements can rely on them. Just a reminder that we do use our judgment determining how to perform any financial statement audit, so we perform a risk assessment process where we look at balances, transactions, processes, and controls, and really focus on areas where the financial statements could be misstated, so we don't audit every balance or every transaction, but we do enough work in order to be able to give that unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements themselves include two different sets of financial statements again this year. The first set are government-wide financial statements, which are full accrual and include all of the city's funds, as well as any long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So anything that the county is required to report under GAAP is reported or included in those government-wide financial statements. And following those are the fund financial statements, which are separated by the cities or, excuse me, the county's governmental funds and proprietary funds, and those provide much more detail on the individual funds balances and transactions. On page two of the summary report, there is a table that summarizes the highlights from those government-wide financial statements as of the most recent year under audit, December 31st, 2023, with comparative information for 2022 and 2021. Again, these are the government-wide financial statements where everything is put together. And there is a management's discussion and analysis on pages four through 17 in the audited financial statements that discusses the changes in the various categories, as well as provides a lot of good information from management of the county's perspective. We also performed a single audit this year. This is typical for the county because in each year it usually has expenditures of federal awards that exceed $750,000. This year, those expenditures were about $7.5 million. There's a schedule of expenditures of federal awards included in that audited financial statement report that lists the detail of all the programs and how much were spent using each funding. We issued two reports as a result of the single audit, and both were clean reports, so clean opinions, no findings, recommendations, and those are also included in the audited financial statements. Ashley, we'll cover the rest of the summary report.
Okay. The next letter I'm going to cover is auditor's communication letter. This letter consists of comments about the audit process and its results that we are required under our professional standards to communicate. We noted no transactions that we considered both unusual and significant. There was one new accounting standard on subscription-based information technology arrangements that was applicable for the county this year. However, it did not have a significant impact on the county's financial statements. There are two new standards that will be effective during 2024. Those are accounting changes and error corrections and compensated absences. We evaluated the estimates affecting the financial statements and found them to be reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. We found the accounting records to be in good order. However, we did propose a few adjustments as a result of our audit procedures. We had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues and no difficulties in performing our audit, and we felt that we received full cooperation from the county's staff. So thanks to Mark and Debbie and their team. The next letter is the management letter. This letter is used to communicate any findings that we have about the county's internal controls and other matters that, in our opinion, are significant enough to warrant your attention. The scope of our engagement was not directed towards an opinion on the adequacy of internal control, but we do consider internal control as a basis for designing our audit procedures. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control, but this letter does contain other recommendations for the commissioners and county officials' considerations.
Are there any questions about the summary report or the audit?
Amanda, when you do the audit, do you interview the elected officials?
We do, yes. We try to meet with all of the elected officials during the audit process each year. We either reach out to them directly or have Mark help us facilitate the connection. So we do attempt to meet with all of them.
Okay. And I know you met with each of us individually in the commission. Were you successful in meeting with all the elected officials?
This year, for the 2023 audit, we did meet with all but one of the elected officials. We were unable to meet with the assessor this year.
Were you able to meet with the assessor last year?
I believe the last time we met with the assessor was for the 2020 audit, so at the beginning of 2021, when we were performing our fieldwork for the 2020 audit. So it has been a few years.
21, 22, 23, 24. You have not met with the assessor?
It has been three years since we have met with the assessor in person. I believe one year we received a response to our email looking to meet with a response that said, you know, no changes or nothing to report this year.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission?
Nope.
Okay. We appreciate the opportunity to perform the audit. Again, Mark and Debbie and their teams were great to work with, and we appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll thank Commander Ashland, Detective and your staff. I think the second time I went, the second year I went through the audit, I think we have learned a lot from the first audit. I think this year went a little smoother, but I appreciate all your help and vibration. Feel well this year.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Move ahead. Do we have any commission comments? Heads and contracts. Unfinished business, nurse practitioner discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today is a follow-up from our discussion last week. Last week, some issues were brought up with that spreadsheet that I had sent at the beginning of May. Harry had some concerns about the projections being overly optimistic. Dana was able to do a little research and found that a typical expectation for a nurse practitioner is to be busy or to have appointments 80% of the time. So that would be, was it 32, 34 hours a week? So I took it down even further to 75% of the time in that spreadsheet that I sent last week. So I said 30 hours a week, that's 75% of the time, and then I ratcheted down even the weeks per year a little bit to account for holidays, vacations, sick time. So it did affect, obviously, the number some. If you look on the tab that was like the overall tab, where we were still in the black, that didn't even account if we decided to contract with another entity to cover half the cost. That was just the straight-up revenue that we project. Of course, it's all projections, you know? It's hard to say what's gonna happen, but I think that it'll be very busy. I did receive a call yesterday from a nurse practitioner that's interested. She has worked at the health department before, and she's a very good practitioner, and I would be happy if she decided to come on board. She did watch the commission meeting from last week, so she knows exactly what she's getting into. I said, we had a good discussion about the needs in the community and what we could do for the public versus what we would offer to county employees or the other entities' employees that are interested. I said I thought it was a very much needed service, and she said she agreed 1,000%. She was excited to come on board and thought that it would be really good for our community as well as our employees. So I would like permission to interview her, and we might need to tweak the salary just a smidge, which, of course, we have that in the first year's budget, and we would in the next year's too if we contracted with those other entities. So she's supposed to be sending her resume today or tomorrow. Not that I don't already know her, but I would like to meet with her and talk, you know, flush out any more questions she has. And Sheila sent me a couple of questions. I hope my response answered most of them with the survey. And, you know, there are some questions about like the hours and the ages and things, and, of course, the liability insurance, but we can't fill out the paperwork until we have the practitioner on board because a lot of it is about their specialties. And, you know, some of those details will have to be ironed out, you know? We're asking for a year commitment. We might have to be flexible with the schedule. I don't know if we're gonna get everything we want because, you know, we are considering that this person's getting only a one-year commitment. Like I said, this person was very excited to come on board and said let's knock their socks off, so.
Has this person, excuse me, practiced in this, in the kind of practice we're looking to set, you know, to have out there? In other words, in an office setting like this?
I'm not sure of their total experience. That's why she's sending me her resume.
Okay.
I know where she's working now, but I don't know everything she's done since she left us and got her nurse practitioner license, because she was not a nurse practitioner when she worked for us.
Got it. I think, you know, you've tweaked the numbers and been a little more conservative. There's still one thing that bothers me a little bit, and that is you're assuming that every appointment is kept. Four per hour, X hours a day, X hours a week, X hours a month, X hours a year. I wonder what the failure rate is for people showing up, you know, whether it's a dentist, hairdresser, a doctor, a whatever. It's not 100%.
No, of course not.
And...
And I don't know what our no-show rate is.
We don't have anything to compare to this type of clinic.
Yeah.
Right. But I was thinking for STDs and other stuff? Yeah, we don't know for sure. We can tell you.
That's why I asked if, you know, if she was already in this kind of a business, what her experience was, her, his, I'm not sure.
Right. I will have to ask them because I don't know.
And maybe she has friends in the business that says, you know, people show up 80% of the time or whatever the number is.
Well, and that 80% of the time of being busy could have included the no-show rate.
The Wall Street Journal had one just a few weeks ago on no-shows. This is hairdressers, dentists, physicians, and they are starting to bill the no-shows. And so I think that is becoming more...
Billing the no-shows and collecting the bill from the no-shows is two different things.
I think some, they... But it is, yeah, it's becoming more predominant, but I would think if one of our employees is sick and they make an appointment, they're gonna keep it. Now, if we expand or if we expand, that could be an issue, but this is still a test.
I understand. So I'm saying take the next step.
Okay. We will interview that person if they, if, yeah, they said they were interested, so I assume they will send their resume in, and we'll make the next step. And like I said, we might need to tweak the salary a little bit. Maybe we can talk about that next week pending a successful interview. And it's still advertised out there indeed, and we put it on Facebook, but I think Jen just got a text from one other person, and then this is the first very interested applicant that I've heard from.
The numbers are clearer than they were, but they're still fuzzy a little bit. And given that, years two and three projects a deficit or a loss, correct?
No.
Not a loss.
Oh, I'm sorry. Small, small.
Just a lower, we're still in the black.
I saw brackets.
Yeah, that is over.
Okay.
So...
24,000, 23,000, and 16,000 to the positive in years two and three.
Right. But we also have heard from another entity that they're willing to contract, I mean, and perhaps pay, well, they said they'd pay half the salary and the benefits. That's not even taking that into account.
Okay.
No, I think let's move ahead, and I'd maybe like to take some action next week.
Perfect. I'm hopeful that we'll have a candidate ready next week.
Kristi, we can also advertise it on the county website.
I think that's already on there. Now, we haven't got any more applicants for our nurse position. They did have an interview set for Friday, and that was a no-show, so we still need to revisit those salaries. I know there were some emails going around. Sheila sent some average salary information, so we still need to revisit that issue because all of our clinic is gonna run a lot better if we're fully staffed, but that's another issue.
Okay.
You need to pick up, you said the Unterrified Democrat in your office. We made the Unterrified Democrat when their commissioner and I think the Eastern Commissioner toured our health department, and they were very impressed. So we're in the Unterrified Democrat.
Their health department director emailed me about the visit, and they apparently like our nurse practitioner idea, and they wanna know if we're gonna do it because they might wanna copy.
Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristi. Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for a payable pending review.
I think I've got one in there. Mileage for the council, all the ways made.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Abstained. Okay. Salary discretion for the assessor's office, Chris.
Is she supposed to do that or?
Oh, I, oh, okay.
This was her review.
Okay.
Yep. I guess I'm good here. Chris got me the job descriptions, the updated descriptions, numbers. We finally made some great progress on his asks for the 24 budget versus where we are right now and where we want to be. He did a good job in gathering information that I was able to verify most of, and I'd say 75% of it is very much in line with what I found. There are a few that I had a little bit of trouble making the numbers match based on what I could verify independently. There are a couple that stand out immediately to me. We need to look at all of them. There are a couple that definitely need some movement quickly, but the one most important to me right now, based on what I know is going on in their office, what we are, where we are on numbers and stuff, is Josh Mullins. And Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong, he is standing in at this point and/or has been appointed as the supervisor in replacement of Jackie in addition to his assessor duties. Is that right?
That's not correct.
It's not?
Josh is doing some limited supervisory duties based on the paperwork that he's teaching our new manager to do.
Okay. I have on the job descriptions you gave me that MH, I'm not gonna identify by name, is gonna be the residential department supervisor, actual supervisor over the entire department.
Correct.
But that Josh is supervising like some of the training and some of the pickup duties that Jackie left, is that right?
Yes, some of the paperwork duties, yes.
Payroll and some of that?
He's looking over some of payroll, that is correct.
Okay. All right. So your ask on him, he is currently at 42,000. Your ask in the 24 budget was at 52. Jackie left at 54,790, almost 54,800, and...
Hey, Sheila, did you send us this?
I have not because I have not finalized all of it, but I will get it to you.
I'm trying to find it, so I follow all of them.
Yeah, no, I have not sent it to you because that's, I wanted to talk to Chris about whether or not I was on target on the information I have. Jackie left at 54,800, so there is movement room to address that supervisor's position. And if Mr. Hernandez is doing more than I expected he was, then that may have to be adjusted.
You gotta make a request that we not use employee names here. I believe we're gonna use employee names. We need to go into closed sessions.
You're right, Kristi, that's all.
What we've done in the past.
I don't think you do. That's public knowledge. I mean, we're...
Well, to some degree it is, but...
We have in the past.
And I find if you use a position name too, so...
I think, yes, the position name are an issue.
Okay. But so those are the two positions because one of them was hired in after the budget was approved for 24 at the amount that was approved. There was a higher ask, but there was the number that was approved hired in for MH. So we have less than a year of service there. He's anticipated supervisor of the department. And then JM, who has picked up supervisory duties to some extent from Jackie, and I know there's been some redistribution of assignments and stuff. I will note that from my information, MH is certified on appraisers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that's something we've been striving for, looking to do. We did get that done. So that kind of impacts the money that we apply to that position. My understanding also is that JM is seeking certification. Is that correct, Chris?
But in their training, after I certify values in July.
And so how long does that?
He and several others will be doing that.
Okay. And that's what I understood. How long is the certification?
It's about a two-and-a-half, three-year process.
Okay. Okay. So I have recommendations on those two positions. Everything else will fall into line based on where we go there. Again, I do have the job descriptions. They need a little bit of tweaking. I do have Chris's numbers on salary study that I'll share with you, and then when I fine-tune mine, I will share my numbers as well. But I think probably by next week, we'll be able to make some decisions on where we are on those raises that were requested in January for the budget. And I would ask that if we can get those approved next week, that they would be effective with the A1 check date. So got some information finally that we can move on in about a month.
So you're gonna send that to us, and then we'll put this back on the agenda next week?
That's what I would like.
Yeah, I'd like to have the information to review it and then have questions. And I can even email you questions beforehand a lot of times. We have this cleared up and...
Yeah, hopefully I can get it to everybody today. Mine is a scrambled mess because I was still getting answers yesterday.
I mean, if you're moving around and changing duties and you got people that are certified, that's different than what we had before.
It was. It is very different from what we had before, and the job descriptions...
So see what we have going on with it.
Yeah. The job descriptions, and he was not the only one, based in the county, job descriptions were a horrible mess. And again, he's not the only one that had that issue. They are much better. They're more in line with formatting and everything that we were seeking. So I think in this respect, this salary discussion, while it's taken us six months to get here, we've made some measurable progress on moving towards Chris's asks in the budget. So we'll be better prepared for the budget for next year certainly, but we might have some mid-year changes that we need to look at.
Well, I know during budget hearing, I think our auditor pointed out that the assessor's office has some of the lowest paid employees.
He does.
So, and I think that's why you reached out to him for job descriptions. So we're...
Well, actually, I reached out to her because I was informed that she needed them.
Okay. Well, we, yeah.
It was discussed in budget hearing several times.
I appreciate that. We're, you know, over six months into the process now, and the sooner we can do it, it would be great for the employees because they're a lot lower. We're from 5,000 to 25,000 less than a similar position, I'm sorry, 15,000 less than a similar position in the county. And what I did when I did the study, I used the old Archer study, but the only portion I used of it was the job grades, and maybe Debbie can correct me on this if I'm incorrect. Archer sent out this form, I think it was in 2003 or 2003, and every employee filled one out, putting their job duties in that. And then Archer took them and created a grade for each position and used numbers to say grade, you know, four, five, six, for instance. I've got, let's see here, just for informational purposes, this is a stupid thing. Yeah. I've got, say, an assessment part two is a grade five, and then it gives several other positions that are also grade five in the county. So what I did was go through the grades, compare the positions that I had to the job titles in the study to get the same grade to look at similar salaries. So I equalized things.
Sheila, if you could give us that, then we can take some action next week.
I would like to put it back on the agenda for next weekend by night.
Chris, how were you able to find MH? Did you get, were we just lucky or did...
It was through the regular application process, and actually, we had received an application prior to the last one that we got when I hired him, but I'm not gonna get into, you know, any issues with that in an open session.
Well, I'm not asking for details, but you were advertising for three years, I think, and suddenly we have a certified appraiser?
He applied the first time about, I think about six months ago.
Okay.
And then he applied this last time after my manager left.
Okay. And the fact that you now have a certified residential, correct me if I'm wrong?
Correct.
Residential that other folks can work under, then their hours start to accumulate for the hours that are needed for them to sit for the exam and become licensed as well?
That's exactly correct. They have to have a certified residential appraiser supervise them.
Got it.
So once we start the training, we have to file paperwork with the appraisal commission, and then that officially starts the process. And I'm not gonna start that until I can get some classes for them to go to, which I hope to get right after July 1st, and that will start the clock on the process of getting them certified. But it's, like I said, it's a minimum of 24 months, and usually it's even about three years for that process.
Okay. This is off-topic, but July 1 is a big date for your office because you advise all political subdivisions of the numbers that, the valuations that were, that were used when they set their levies.
I certify the county values on real and personal property.
Got it.
Anything else?
Nope. See you next week.
Sure.
You need any extra information, let me know, and I'll give you a call.
All right. Thanks.
Are you comfortable, Chris, with me forwarding everything you sent me so they can see?
Oh, definitely, yes, definitely. Thank you.
Okay. Next, abatement property located at 1800 Todd Court, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65109.
You need to move, Joe? Do you have a...
No, I'm good. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, so first one, 1800 Todd Court. The Cole County Health Department is requesting approval to move forward with finalizing the abatement of 1800 Todd Court. This property was previously presented at November 7th, 2003 commission meeting. The property occupant was present for the meeting and was granted additional time. The property occupant was present for the meeting and was granted additional time. You guys might be familiar with this. What you're seeing right now, you've seen previously. There are two documents. One will be the, from the previous abatement, and the one that you're seeing now is going to be the most recent photographs taken. This person has been hard to get a hold of, but of course, they were given extra extension because they purchased a, I believe it was a shed that they were supposed to put up and put all the things that they had outside into the shed. However, time kept on going by, tried reaching out, and unsuccessful. Of course, when they were at the previous abatement hearing, they did say that the only time they're available is after work, and by then, we're not here. So time went on, and as you can see, not much has been done. So there's pretty much a solid waste story still present. There's past Harbridge. When I was there, there's a bunch of stagnant water and mosquito larvae just all over the place. So yeah, as you can see there. So we're pretty much requesting approval to move forward with finalizing this abatement.
So the handout today is the, our current...
So the current one is going to be the woman today's date on...
Yeah, got it, right. And this is the twenty-three, this is the prior...
Yes, it would say old on December.
They have lots of things, but evidently you don't have a lot more, I just...
I guess not, so. And just to mention as well, because we haven't received, you know, communication with them for a while, we did not get photographs from the back. The back is also horrible, so, but we did not go any further, so.
I did see the, oh, the gentleman who appeared here back before. I did actually see him, not scheduled, but at a, I think, going in or out of a doctor's office some months ago.
I saw him as well, I think, two months ago in a restaurant.
And, but this is more than two months ago, and I said, you know, you got to get going.
Yeah.
So I hear you, I see it.
Yeah.
So do you post on their door or something when we're getting ready to come out there? Some sort of, we bring a dump truck?
So, July, we did discuss this. So what our plan is, just so that they're aware, we're going to send them another copy of the NOV that was previously sent to them, and what with the updated version, and probably a letter as well with our letterhead that lets them know what's going to happen, that they're probably will be abated. And I believe we have to be out there as well when it is being abated, if...
Yeah, we'll make an inventory of what items, if any, are acceptable to keep, you know, stay on the property, that aren't considered an issue, and then those that are a concern, that need to be, you know, that there are violations that...
Yeah, just want to make sure we have our ducks in a row, because we did some of this down on South Laney Creek, and they came back and hollered that we stole their valuables.
Yeah.
Money worth its weight in metal throwaway, but I don't know if you've been out there in the office. That's cleaned up, it looks great.
At Laney Creek?
Yeah, I think that property actually sold to a neighbor finally. But it's sad that it comes to this. I don't know why, they've had ample opportunity, and I don't have a problem going forward with it.
Now, Joe, we will accumulate, record, and have documentation of the expense that we incur to do this.
Yes.
That goes over to the collector at some point, is that right? And it's just, it's like any other tax bill that the owner receives. Is the owner, is that property currently, Mr. Collector? Is that property currently, current?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I will check though.
All right.
You guys, please.
So you're looking for an action by the commission to proceed with the abatement?
Correct.
I'll make that motion to proceed with the abatement of eighteen hundred Todd Court.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It does appear it is paid up through twenty-three.
We try to work, we try to work with these property owners.
Is that the only one?
Yeah, we try our best as well, you know. We give them ample time, you know, try to work with us, but at some point, you know, it's downhill, so we have to come here. The next one is going to be on sixteen ten Starlight, so it's pretty much the same deal. This one was also brought to the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three commission meeting. They were actually granted an extension as well, because Todd Court was granted an extension. And we felt that because they were brought at the same time, they would be granted the same extension. This one has been a little bit more difficult, because we have actually been threatened by the homeowner. So the last pictures that you're seeing were actually kind of rushed as well, because we had to get the sheriff's department out there. And it was also storming pretty badly, so we had to put a rush on the photographs.
I like that.
That might have been...
It said sixteen ten Starlight on it.
Oh, man, somebody's watching. So yeah, so as you can see with the photographs there, and so he was also given an extension, because he did say he was going to purchase a shed, which he did. He did move some of the items that were on the front. However, as you can see, I, it doesn't look like it. But they removed some, and they bring back more, so it looks pretty bad in the back as well. So we're pretty much, you know, wanting to move forward with this and finalize the abatement. Chris, on this one as well.
Again, we tried to work with them, and so we're not overs...
They think we are, unfortunately.
Well...
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the abatement on sixteen ten Starlight Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. You too, Joe. Okay, approval and signing of supplemental liability insurance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Struggling with my voice today, so I will do my best here. So this is a supplemental insurance policy that will cover students who are taking the first responder course from our training entity. So as we've discussed previously, we've been making a focus to offer entry-level training and build the county volunteer medical first responder program. We've been successful in doing so. We have a class starting next Monday that has double-digit students in it. But in order to do so, we did need to come up with a little bit of liability insurance. So we did reach out to our insurance provider. They have found a student liability insurance policy for three hundred and twenty dollars. This is the language. However, I do not believe that we have the final purchase contract. So Jill has reviewed this, and what we're going to ask today is to approve that. And when the contract does come through, we can get it signed, so that we have it in place for Monday.
Top good. You need a motion to approve the...
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental liability insurance pending contract review by county counselor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of Pfizer participation agreement.
So I sent an email with the information on this. Right now, we're not using any of the Pfizer vaccines. You know, they have COVID and pneumonia and other things we buy from, like Merck and GSK. But we did sign up for this discount program in case we wanted, you know, to use them if prices change or we decide. So we just want to keep the agreement in place. Like I said, we don't use it, but it's kind of want to keep the agreement in place in the event that we do need to buy some vaccine from them, we can get the discounted rate. It is an electronic signature, so we have just asked for you to approve for Jennifer to do the electronic signature to stay active on the discount program.
You get that email too.
Right, and Jill did look at it too. Do you want a copy of it? I can add it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Pfizer participation agreement contract.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion on the Renn program.
Good morning, thank you for making time for us. My name's Todd Muller, my local attorney. I represent Hawthorne Bank and its Trust Services Department. I think the county's been approached in that a revocable trust was created by Mr. and Mrs. Renn in her vivos while they were alive. They've since perished and died, leaving in the capable hands of Hawthorne Bank some property in the county that was dedicated or purported to be dedicated for a memorial park to be named after Lawrence Renn. It's my understanding the county has looked that property over. I've received emails from both Mr. Otto and Mr. Landwear, and they've indicated that the county either doesn't, lacks personnel or lacks funding to establish and maintain that memorial park into perpetuity, and you'd like to decline that gift. And if so, Hawthorne Bank respectfully requests that you take action on that, either by resolution or vote, to decline that gift. It would revert back to the trustees, at which point in time, the alternative or secondary purpose of the trust would be to establish college scholarships. Hawthorne Bank Trust Services would like to establish college scholarships and distribute the monies after the sale of the property for that purpose.
We're going, we'll do that, Todd. Just a minor correction, I think, we weren't going to get the property. We were going to be able to lease it for a buck a year.
I think, I think the lease, I think the lease indicates convey or lease, you're right.
Yeah, so in my discussions with Mr. Renfro at the bank, it was always, we would lease, we would never really own it. So it's not like we're declining a gift of property. We're declining the opportunity to lease it and improve it and make...
Maintain it.
Maintain it. And that's where we ran into the spending issue.
Thank you for the correction.
Yeah, that's fine.
The trust indicates that it's basically to initiate the gifting or the lease process, but it's not the sole source of maintenance and improvement for the park that would essentially fall on the county.
Got it.
Shortly thereafter, it's my understanding, you're going to decline that opportunity. Shortly thereafter, there'll be a petition filed by my firm on behalf of the bank seeking a declaratory judgment from Judge Green and the probate division, officially confirming that you rejected that opportunity. And that way, the, no other beneficiaries, no other parties could come back on Hawthorne Bank and indicate that they did this inappropriately.
Yeah, we went out and toured that, it is, it's a unique piece of property. It really would make a great park. It would be a very expensive proposition.
So I had some other interests. Fourage Shooting Sports had approached me about it, and I kind of talked to Hawthorne Bank somewhat. And I don't know if there's actually a trustees board, or if it's the kids and...
There are no kids.
One of the real estate, okay.
There are no descendants, right?
There are no children.
Yeah.
So there was somebody that was somewhat involved in it, kind of is behind making decisions on it too, because the problem with the shooting sports would be, they would want a certain area for themselves. And from what I understand, it would have to be opened, all of it would have to be open to the public and accessible, and that's low.
So Jeff, without giving the intimate details of the trust, it's to establish memorial park in Mr. Renn's name. The purpose for the park is basically recreation. There are terms such as walking trails and such like that. Shooting sports was not specifically expressed in the trust, so...
And I had, somebody had sent me the trust, and I read through it, and I don't know if you could get creative or not with it, but there was a lot more hoops to jump through. It's just something that if they're still interested in doing something memorial, Fourage can get money through contravention in a lot of different places. We just didn't have it in our parks departments, so we hate turning it down and not having this memorial for them, but it just didn't happen. So I didn't know if that's an option down the road, if they're like, let's just move on, and that's fine.
I think they're dedicated to the idea of college scholarships. The way the trust is actually written, it, in my humble opinion, and my legal argument, is going to be that they gave a contingency if the county declined the gift or the opportunity to lease it. It says and slash or college scholarships. In my world, that means you have the alternative as a priority to do the college scholarships. In my position, my argument would be to advocate that the county doesn't necessarily have priority over the property. It's a county memorial park or college scholarships. So if you decline this, we move laterally into college scholarships, and I don't think we have to go outside.
I just ran into issues with it. To do with the shooting sports, it'd just be too difficult to have it open to the public, all of it open to the public. When I read through it, that's the way I read it, is that it all has to be open to the public.
Well, and Jill can better address this in confidence with you guys, but essentially, there is a, there is a act in the state of Missouri that so long as you don't charge admission to public properties such as this, then you have some sovereign immunity, or you have immunity from liability. If you were to charge a membership or admission for shooting sports or otherwise...
I think they would want to put it, and maybe they wouldn't necessarily charge for it, but they would have it locked up and restricted. So I think there were some issues we would have to jump through and would kind of hit a wall with it. I don't know, we tried to find different ways to make it work, and unfortunately...
I think that runs afoul of that immunity that you get by state law. And then like this gentleman, he'd be coming in, and somebody'd be asking for some more money for insurance, and then you'd have to address that as well.
Yeah, well, there's a whole lot more to it than just, okay, hey, we'll let you have part of the park, so.
So you're asking us to draft a letter just saying we decline...
I'm actually asking if you do it today, maybe by oral motion, an approval to decline that gift or that opportunity to enter into that relationship.
I'll make a motion that the commission furnish the trustee of the Renn estate?
Actually, the Renn Trust or Ren...
The Renn Trust, with written notification that the county regretfully declines the opportunity to lease the property under the terms of the trust, and that the presiding commissioner authorized to sign for the commission.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, man. So we will use the minutes of your meeting as an exhibit in my petition to actually get Judge Green to declare that you've declined that. So don't be alarmed if you get sued. You'll get that soon.
That's so much to know.
Don't scare us anymore.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Todd.
See ya.
If we get the contract for EMS insurance, that's just policy. Are we going to get a purchase agreement from, or do we just need to tell Jeff that we're buying this?
On our current way, we just tell them to buy in and give us the policy, the active policy. We'll never get anything signed, that's a contract, so.
Okay, do we have anything else to come before the commission?
I'll make a motion pursuant to section six ten point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: Personnel issues under six ten point zero two one subsection thirteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sam?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.